So the way that we're gonna have to do that would be a motion to tables and nobody to say the opportunity.
I may go out to the tables.
Table second.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, all in favor?
Yeah.
Get your letter from table.
I approve.
Okay, and before you leave, I need you to give the engineer's summary.
Okay, does everybody have a copy of my report?
Yes.
Alright, so there were two action items under my report that are 12A and 12B on your agenda. 12A is to approve of the resolution for the watershed restoration protection program grant in the amount $250,000 is the maximum amount of the grant you could request to be used for the Blundstone Run stream bank restoration. So what this is, is in the vicinity of Parkview Apartments, I went out and viewed this with Jeff about two weeks ago, and this grant is, the deadline for this grant is May 31st, and you have a rather severe issue there where the sanitary sewer is almost completely exposed along with the manholes, and if that gives, there's gonna be a very serious environmental issue there. So the idea would be to restore the stream. The restoration grants are exactly like they say, they're for watershed projects. I had talked to Jeff about, you know, what he thought was the best one, and we both think this is one that you should do, so the recommendations will include that resolution.
Or clarities you might wanna add, if it is a match?
It is a match. The good thing about this grant is it's a 15% match, which is very good as far as grants go. Usually they're 30 or 50% matches, this is only a 15% match.
Alright, can we get a motion, please? It's been moved and properly second, I'll wait for the discussion.
Yes, well, is $250 plus $250,000 plus the 15% match required to full cost?
Yes, I think that, we think that what we'll do is we'll have a complete cost estimate to accompany the grant, but we think that it will be a complete cost estimate.
Okay, and then is the 15% required to match it in the budget?
Yes.
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars is 15%, so I think it's in the budget. We can ask basically.
Yeah, we should know.
In all likelihood, though, in all likelihood, this will be a 2023 project.
Twenty twenty three.
But yeah, because we won't hear from the grant till probably late fall.
Okay. So I appreciate that, but I mean, you act like it's not a valid question, right?
It's a valid question.
It is, we're able to, we can do it, we can plan for it. Thank you for letting us know this is a 2023 agreement.
Okay, all in favor, which indicate by written hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion carries.
The vote is not unanimous. I approve.
Okay. Councilor Roquell Cloud, you said no?
She said she approved.
Okay, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Okay, proposal carries, six to one. Six to one, motion carries.
No problem.
Okay, the next, next item, Mr. Bertruson. Yes, 12B. So Jeff had asked me a couple months ago, and I had this on my agenda, just hadn't had the chance to, I sent a proposal to the borough to have a condition assessment done of this, of the hall. Mr. Dodson had called me last week about some severe leaks in the vicinity of the fire department. Jeff has some concerns about the HVAC equipment and other portions of the building. So the idea is that we would perform this assessment, a complete evaluation of the HVAC system, the windows, doors, roofing system, et cetera.
Yes, I remember that. So we're prepared. Could I have a motion to approve your film of 70? It's been moved and properly second. Are there any further questions from Mr. Bertruson?
I actually have a question.
Okay, Mr. Roquell, you're the back end.
So, we're getting mad for not knowing this, but don't we have to have this assessment done anyway for insurance requirements?
I don't think, I don't think it would have anything to do with the trust department.
Because I think I remember we had to get an assessment done in prior years for insurance requirements, I remember.
You already said, because OSHA made this proposal, then we had to add in of that because, or access channel with a roof access to the old HVAC system that's on the roof. So in piggybacking off of that, my question would be, is this outside of your regular work performance that you would fill it separately for it? Because I know that, you know, we already had an assessment done, and they told us that we needed to cut open a part of the roof to make access for it, because the system that's already up there is, if you can't access it safely.
Yeah, I don't think they're connected at all, because that sounds like you just said, like an OSHA. The idea of this one was, was a specific look at the HVAC systems to give a determination as to their useful life, and there was, again, questions about the condition of the roof. The idea of the assessment would be is, we would do the building assessment, come back with a report to council as to our recommendations of what would be done, and then, again, that would be something you'd have to budget for.
So, but that's not two separate things, because there was a, there was an issue, we were already told that there was an issue with the HVAC system, but the contractor that came out to assess it could not safely access it, and that's why we were recommended to cut a roof access in so they could safely look at the unit, because they would have to put a ladder in an unsafe position in order to even get up there. So what I'm saying is that the assessment was already done, and the recommendation was already made, so I just, I wouldn't want us to, you know, to re-remit the wheel because it was already done.
So you're saying the whole was actually done already?
I'm not saying that, that was the recommendation, because they couldn't, they already made the assessment.
Yeah, I mean, if Jeff were here, he probably could speak more intelligently.
And with respect to the roof, we just had. And you just had all of the roofs replaced while you're still.
Yeah, I'm coming.
The only roof that wasn't done at the time was the lower roof above the police department, and it goes right down to the kitchen, and then.
And you have a leak. And you have a leak.
So, but there were three roofs that were.
And it's been going on, it's been going on for two years now.
Right.
That is the only roof, that is the only roof that was not complete. The main roof here and all this stairwells are all done.
He, that's what he wanna find out. He wants to do the examination, do the assessment, so he can get those answers. So we wanna authorize him to get the answer.
But that's a little bit of his face, this is for, what this proposal is for everything, but everything else was already done. That one little part was not done. So this proposal is for everything.
The title.
Right, so if it was for the entire building, and we already, we recently just had the roofs done, all but on roofs.
We already have the recommendation for the access channel to the HVAC system. It's already there.
Okay, the building, the building is how old? A hundred and fifty years old? The building is a hundred and fifty years old. The assessment includes windows, it doesn't, it obviously does not include him recommending we put a new roof on. We're talking about the interior of the building, where there may be issues, there may be issues of asbestos, there could be any number of issues.
Windows, doors.
Windows, doors.
So what's the cost of the assessment?
It was eleven thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay. That's a lot of money if we just.
But you often want to know the value.
How many square feet is in this building? Do you know how many square feet?
I would wanna hazard a guess, yes. My suggestion is maybe we can come back to this at the workshop when Jeff is here.
So I'd like to make a little new table, this request.
We'll readjust at the workshop when Jeff is here, because I think he knows.
Yeah, and we'll have our next, the other thing I wanna announce is that July and August, we will not have workshop meetings. They're standard.
We still have a legislative meeting.
We'll have the legislative meeting, but we'll not have workshop meetings, who will be combining the two. June will be the next workshop meeting, first Monday.
If we don't have no time all from the legislative meeting, that's what I.
There's a bill set to be made.
Okay. Well, we still have the motion on the floor. We need to say some votes on the table.
Yeah, it's passed.
I approve today.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up, which is not.
Engineer place.
The only other thing I wanted to bring up, the gentleman who's here earlier in perfect place, we did meet with him onsite with Jeff, and our office is working on a recommendation to put a small piece of pipe in there. We look, you have a, an on-call contract with, or now, and we're looking at using that on-call contract to put a small piece of pipe, divert the water to take away that bonding issue. So he was onsite with us when we met, so just wanted everybody.
Do you need an approval for that?
No, not this month, because I'll come back with the recommendations.
Okay, I wanna make one last comment on this agenda. I want to accept the fire, the code departments report that they submitted to this packet, code, police department, to be accepted and approved, though they weren't able to make those presentations at the workshop. So code.
No, for code is a representative, for code here to see.
I know, but they gave a written report, I wanna approve that written report.
He has a written report.
Pardon me?
He has a written report.
He braced to get the report, he's like.
Oh, you wanna give the written report? We just wanted you, we just wanted you to turn it in, and then it'll be on the website for people.
What other worries about figuring it?
Yeah, I think if I get the bad.
Because he loves to do it. None of the research is here on the website. When are the, when are the research on the website? I have questions for the code officer.
I just wanted to say, and I'll leave, you enjoy Top Street Parkway and that bad condition down there. Again, you have, we researched, you have an on-call contract with Damon, do some paving work, so we're, again, we're trying to find out from that on-call contract, what it would cost to do some immediate repairs down there, and myself and Jeff are working on that, so. It's a pretty bad down there.
No, I heard Jeff sent the email to me, if I recall. It's on, the work is supposed to get done sometime this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna use that, as I say, we're gonna use that on-call contract you have with Damon to get that work.
Okay, and what about the Westside Street, the other part? Like, right off the side of RIS?
The, same thing.
Okay, that's all together. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you know what stage we are in the settling of the, because that side of RIS and Westside is paved, but it was settled, and then it had to be paved again, so what stage are we with that?
Whether, you mean in terms of like the temporary paving versus the permanent?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know with that, but I just know that Jeff intends to do all that work under that contract.
Okay.
Alright. I will excuse myself.
No, there is a question, Madam President.
Yes.
Code was not able to give their report at the workshop. That is the report that he had sent. You wanna come on up? Come on up, come on up. Patient.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I respect space. How you doing? My name is Albert Campbell III, one of the code enforcement offices for the Borough of Yehia. Most of you are already members, but for those of you ahead that have not, hello. So where would you like me to start?
From the top.
You talking about the numbers, or?
Yeah, just a brief summary of the number of inspections, et cetera.
Okay.
Hot spots.
Hot spots.
Some of the hot spots, the code department has been dealing with is the McDay Boulevard Shopping Center with the abandoned vehicle situation. Citations have gone out as far as that goes, and some of the license plates have been tracked, so we can know who owns the actual vehicles, and they have been moved, although they come back and forth sometimes, but we are definitely on it. Forest Creek Apartments, 300 South Front Street, has had an issue with their trash pickup or the dumpster, whoever collects the trash from their dumpsters, they've also been issued citations, and they recently switched hands as far as management, so we're trying to, they're trying to get that under control as well.
Did you get one possess these pizza at my home in Providence, also for the same issue?
For what?
Citation for dumping the dumpster as a noise violation? Because that was something I reported, something.
No.
Okay.
Excesses wasn't on our, yeah, it wasn't.
Okay, might be the next, okay, I'll speak to Mr. Stowe.
Okay, no problem. Washington Woods Department, trash and grass issues, again, citations have been issued for that as well, because this is a constant issue with Washington Woods, so we're trying to get that under control as well. The new code officer, Ms. Sims, has started, she is in training right now and getting familiar with our process. Shade tree letters have been sent out to all residents with trees where it was wished for removal from public works. Inspectors are writing up sidewalk violations as we find them, if not repaired, citations are being issued. Now that the weather is breaking, we definitely getting back into that, as well as grass cutting violations.
Can I ask you a question about the grass?
Sure.
At what point do you think they, because I've seen some grass that's like two feet high.
That has to be.
So you decide them, you view them, because before, I know there's a process where they would involve public works, and public works might take care of it, and then build, build a payment?
Right.
Or build a home owner? Because that's the very surface of my business, two feet high, I don't just residential properties.
Excuse me, this is my, Councilwoman Roquell, I asked about the same situation as far as the grass concerned. We've been having a lot of rain the last few weeks, so I talked to Mr. Stowe, and he said he's gonna give them like a little grace period, but like today was nice enough for them to get the grass cut, so after today, maybe they will decide they'll pour, not cut, because I've seen the same.
I mean, like two feet. I mean.
As far as the bathing, so most of the properties I've seen, as far as what you're talking about, are bathing properties, so as far as that goes, well, I said my.
But I've reported, I've reported once, and I'm just, it's heavily occupied.
You might wanna tell the public that there's a code, that the level of the grass is actually 10 inches, and we're working to reduce it by ordinance down to six inches. So what you might see is long grass, and it is true, but code, it's 10, the law is max 10 inches.
So two feet is 24 inches, and I don't believe I'm exaggerating.
I just wanted to better the public.
Up to the knees.
10 inches.
I have a quick, very quick, because I do much.
So the abatement, like, are you abating in the event of repeat violation was my question?
Well, I've been on for a year, and I personally have not done any abatements myself.
You report some other works for abatement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
All right, real quick, I met somebody on Tuesday at the Hall's, a very elderly lady who wanted to know who she could speak to about getting repeated citations about her grass, she really doesn't have anybody to help her, so what can she do about that? Who would she speak to about that?
I'd have to refer to Rufus, because he has a specialized situation.
Yeah, I'm gonna get her to email me, and I will forward that information to them.
Okay, listen to this piece, I spoke to the lady from senior community services, and they have a gentleman, volunteers.
Okay, cool.
He may be able to take care of that issue.
All right, so as soon as she sends me her information, because I gave my card, so she's gonna email her, about her situation, because she's like, it's starting to become a financial burden for her, you know, I just felt bad for her. She was like, I see other people's grass, like you said, two feet high, so she feels like she's being tarred, and she's, so, okay, thank you.
Can you ask a question?
I actually have a question about shade trees. So the shade tree, tree letters have been sent out to the residents, so what are we doing with respect to replacement? The residents who would like to have the shade tree replaced with something smaller?
That's something I'll have to ask Jeff.
Okay, so to the letters, does it state something about you have to get the cement repaired once it's removed, the stump is removed?
It is one from, what I heard, it is on order to repair, and we've also gotten arguments back that if this is a vergle tree, then why live with a twisted sidewalk?
Right, but then, see, this whole process, because if you're gonna remove, this is supposed to be a tree line community, and if you're gonna remove the shade tree because it's defective, that is causing a hazardous condition, and some residents want that shade tree replaced for the aesthetics of that tree line community that we're supposed to have.
I understand.
Not, you know, everyone will want it to replace, but if you're telling people in a letter, you know, you have to, you know, you're not saying nothing about replacement, but you have to fix the sidewalk, then it's like, you're making them spend money to fix the sidewalk, and they may want to replace a replacement.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, I will refer to Jeff on Monday, when he comes in. I'm not sure if he's in tomorrow, that's why I said Monday.
No, we'll talk to you, we'll talk to you.
Yeah, because I kinda feel like we're just taking down a tree, and we're not replacing it.
No, they are replacing, but I don't know if everybody's on it or not, but he did say they are replacing.
Right, but if you're sending out a letter saying we wanna remove your tree, and you have to repair the sidewalk, what if that resident wants a replacement tree, a smaller tree to replace, but you're telling her or him that he has to repair the sidewalk, so you're having them spend money to repair the sidewalk just to tear it out?
Again, it's one tree. Yeah, so they are doing it, they're saying.
And then can we also make sure that the letter is telling them what their options are, because I don't believe, once they take all the trees out, then, you know, if they put cement down, then now we have a stormwater management issue, and everybody, you know, you're standing on water in your basement, and so we wanna make sure that we're encouraging the, you know, like, we don't wanna take out the tree, tell the people to cement, and they come back and tear the cement up, you know, so just, just make sure that the letter is clear. It would be good if we could get a copy of the letter, just one out to the residents, so we'll know what to look for, so if residents ever ask us, we'll, you know, we're able to respond instead of just saying, it's a code department.
I understand, that shouldn't be an issue to get property.
Okay, but can we email it to our council?
I will definitely note that, to email the shade change letter.
And my question was, I have a neighbor that planted bamboo trees in the driveway, the trees are now like 20 feet high, is there any recourse that residents have to try to get that corrected?
I believe we do have an ordinance as far as bamboo is concerned, the specifics of it, how much you can have, or whatever, how high it can go, I'm not sure, but I believe there is an ordinance for them.
Okay, and finally, Ms. Roquell had a series of questions that she presented earlier today regarding my services. I'd be happy to entertain, oh, I can't?
You can, I'll do it.
But she could call me, I'll be happy to respond to her.
Okay, um, how, is that, good, good there? All right, any other questions, Gordon? Any other questions?
So, do you have the numbers? I'm sorry, do you have numbers to present? Okay.
Before you get to the numbers, so we can just get off this page, the, I see smoke detectors, picked up some smoke detectors, and distributed them to residents who need them, how are you identifying people who need them? Are the residents being size via website? How do residents know? Are we just picking and choosing who we want to give?
No.
You gotta like mine.
I think I can, I think I can help you with it. The firehouse picked up smoke detectors from the Vol. 6, say, ABC State of Life, we distribute them when residents come here, and they asked us for, for, they asked Rufus for smoke detectors, he goes and gives them one. They have to be a resident, a borough resident to get these smoke detectors, but otherwise, that's the way, that's the way it works. That's the way it's been working for the last, um, some years. I don't think the code goes out and, you know, puts the smoke detectors up, I think they just hand them one and say, here, go put this up, you know.
How do we make sure the residents know that they can?
I don't, I'm not 100% sure how Rufus is handling that, what residents get them, they come up, they have, I guess they have to show ID that they, that they live in the RBE. And when they come to, when they come to the firehouse, we just send them upstairs here, and we say to them, if you're not a resident, you can't, you can't get them.
Something like that should be in the newsletter, something like that should be on the website instead of.
They're both on the websites.
Being disruptive in meetings.
Yes, I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna get into the, I'm not gonna get into the politics and how, how he does it, but that's the way, it's been going on for.
Information out.
Yes, we, and that's the way the information's been, been going on for the last, um, some years.
And can we, can you see that that information can go on the ticker across the front, it, you know, the sign at the front, that goes across.
The, the sign up on here.
The ticker sign up front.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it just says, you know, three sentence sections available if you need them.
Yeah, and once again, and these smoke detectors are 10-year smoke detectors, they don't have to be replaced for 10 years. That's the, that's the life expectancy of those, these type of smoke detectors, they do not have, you don't have to change them, you don't have to touch them, just leave them alone, and they'll do their, do their job.
Are they coming in?
They're in, they're in, he has, he has them locked up in it, in one of those cabinets outside here.
Now, maybe put a bit, what about carbon, carbon monoxide detectors, am I missing anything? Are they also carbon monoxide detectors?
No, just, just, just smoke detectors.
Do we have carbon monoxide detectors?
Uh, no, not that I, not that I'm aware of.
All right.
Just qualify them, just qualify us.
Mr. Stokes?
I, I have done that for, for people, I was going out to the people for assistance.
Okay, because I know some other people can't do it themselves.
We did notify the community by way of the website, if you look at the website, you'll see Mr. Stokes holding two fire detectors, so once he gave it to me, I asked it to be uploaded, so it should be on the website, website, that there were smoke detectors being handed out first, come to a service on the website.
Which website? Is which one, a dot com or a dot work?
The dot com.
Oh, I didn't know about that until recently.
Me either, so it's on the dot com.
You ain't know?
No.
Let's get sidebar. We have the mayor's report, mayor, do you wanna give that report or postpone? And the answer is the title.
Just, just a couple of observations. Number one, it seems like the tax collector had to leave, she has, you know, medical challenges, she's elderly, we have the young man give this report, the tax collector, I've never seen in Gormings where the tax collector's report was last, and I thought that was insensitive. First of all, by priority, we should hear from the tax collector, we haven't heard of the tax collector for various reasons.
You gave it to Mr. Nichols to present, I didn't wish you.
Yeah, well, we've also had questions for the tax collector, we didn't give her the respect to answer them, you know, some of them pertain to the previous tax collector, some of them pertain to this kind of tax collector, we kind of blasted her and not given her respect to.
Blasted her.
Well, we said that it's about the 60, or whatever, from the 450.
Not that that was a previous tax collector.
Anyway, some of it did pertain to this guy.
No, no.
Well, we should have asked, we should have asked our tax collector, but the state of effect, she couldn't come. But she had to, and I will discuss my report, I have, I have some serious concerns about some of the things I saw today, really serious concerns, and I will discuss that the next, the next one.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Yes.
When are we going to hire some police officers? I have witnessed an uptick in drag racing happening in our borough. Specifically, what I witnessed was maybe two or three cars, I believe it was Saturday night around maybe between two and three AM, drag racing on West Coast Creek and making that sharp turn up Cypress Street. I did speak to Lieutenant Burns about that issue, I feel that we are going to be in big trouble because we don't have enough officers, and we need to seriously consider bringing the police force up to full status with the officers.
As you know...
I don't know what's going on, but that, yeah, drag racing, someone just want to get her, someone is absolutely want to get her, and as you know, you may not know, but I think like around Rockland or Rockland off of Bangora, there were like donuts in the streets, I had seen them for a while, so apparently they're starting back up.
It was a major part, I mean, the hours late, it was a major part of my report in the caucus meeting early this month, I brought it up, and I sounded the alarms and give, gave the caveat that, you know, we're in serious, serious trouble with policing. It's in my report, I have four email attachments, how policing has been very, very difficult to keep police officers, we're all in our area, all around the country, we're down police officers. SEPTA has the twenty percent on the staff, Philadelphia Police, I believe, is like four to six hundred on the staff, it's not enough nine-one-one operators. Officers are retiring and leaving in droves, so, you know, not want to go the, beat the dead horse, once you stop dismantling the police department, it's hard, it's hard to, you know, to keep up with officers, and the civil service, we have five full-time officers down, we're a small police force, we need part-timers, we can't get enough part-timers, I've talked to Lieutenant Burns, compared to, you know, the other police departments, Lansdowne Darby, Upper Darby, I'm not finished, you can't, but just let me finish, they're experiencing the same problems, once you train, and also, I know that there, this council wanted more black police officers, and we shot ourselves in the foot by dragging our feet, we had some great candidates that were part-timers, and as soon as they could get another job, a full-time job, and other municipalities offered more, we lost them.
Right.
And it's not going to be something that you could just snap your fingers, then you could, you know, it's going to take years, so this is not the time to start firing folks, get going, you know, catatonic, and, and dismantling police departments, because we can't, it's going to be hard to catch up.
Yeah, well, I'm just concerned, and I agree with you.
So having a moratorium is not a great idea?
No, son. But that, that window between like twelve AM and five AM, a lot is happening, a lot is happening.
And it's going to be, and it's going to be worse, you know, carjackings are up.
Right.
Yeah, we had six all last year, we had four already this year, so carjackings are up, the summertime crime goes up, so we're going to, we're, we're in deep trouble.
Yeah, we need...
So we know, we need to know what we're doing when we make these decisions, that's why I'm frustrated, I get a newsletter here, where I wrote an article, and I'm stunned because my article's not in there, the whole thing is doctored and centered, and it's not something that I wrote.
Oh, surprise.
So, you know, we talked about, yeah, we talked about cooperation and all that, and I wrote an article like I always do, that's not it.
So could you tell me what happened to the twelve part-time, I think it was eleven part-time officers that were let go, what, what happened with that?
Basically, they got, they got other jobs, and they weren't, they weren't really serving the borough because they weren't working, they were, they were just unpaid, you know, and then when they got...
They had those forty-hour, those part-timers hit.
Full-time jobs, they got full-time jobs.
Where they were given forty hours to work as part-time, is that what...
Part-time is also, I think you, you folks don't understand, part-time is not there where they get a part-time, they get a part, a lot of times, you have the part-timers, they work, then they, they have other jobs, they, they're not available, they're not available.
No one was fired, no one was fired, they all left with full-time positions.
Yeah, they all left with full-time positions. We had an African-American lady, she had two masters, we wanted, the chief wanted it, he dragged her foot, we had Elijah here, that the chief was, was mentoring, and we lost him because Upper Darby, you know, grabbed him up, and we're not, this is not an environment where we can pick and choose.
And there are benefits, pay for full-time work, and our...
We're looking for everything, right now, we're looking for everything, we're looking for full-timers, and we're looking for part-timers, but dismantling the police department is not a way to go to fix it.
I just want to come up with a...
Council, councilor.
A remedy, a life...
We need to hire, we need, we need the civil service commission.
Mayor, it's, it's one minute to...
Public safety, that's a matter, we'll head into eleven o'clock, let's call that way.
Council, Council Johnson.
I just want to remind everyone about Flag Day, June, eighteen, January, June, we have vendors, we have a couple of drinks coming, we also have a special focus coming through radio, and I would like to invite all council members to please come out here and meet the board of state coaches if you like.
Can we please, where are we with the budget for Flag Day?
Well, right now, we're at twenty thousand and forty-two dollars.
And what is the budget that we have to work with?
Twenty-five dollars.
And we're saying within that budget?
Yes.
Mayor President?
Yes.
We ask for your consideration, under the thirteen D public works, consideration of agreement to remove over, over mature trees at the Borough Hall, the trees are essentially dead, lines are covering them, and we drive by them every day, and so I'm talking to our public works director, they recommended that we have those trees removed and the stumps removed, to, to, you know, about eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, can I have a motion at the recommendation?
Nothing, we should be, we should wait on that, until we have the residents' shitty trees to trust.
This is around the borough.
The residents are a resident, the residents come first.
People have a heart.
Okay, the residents come first.
The trees are on this ground, and they're, they're dead, and they're, and they're potentially dangerous.
What if there's dead sycamores on Long Gate or in Road Street, there's two, at completely one of them ears, they're stone cold dead, they're dropping limbs every, every few months, there's more, huge graves in the streets.
You're walking out.
Everybody, everybody else is walking.
You're supposed to ask the lead, y'all just getting up, walking out.
Did her lady call her, and she was like, two hours ago?
She asked, I watched her.
All right.
I called, beat, asked the president and council lead.
All right.
Okay, the maintenance adjournment.
Thank you very much, thank you, I really appreciate it.
Okay, two questions.
They're all okay, that's, that's, we have to, we have to stop by, we pay people for like a lot, they have, they have, they have, they have, they have, they have, they have people don't have straight water, but they'll have, because that's wrong, they're going sticky hot, and...